We will now call the common council meeting of December 15, 2020 to order roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Duke Biak.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Everybody, please rise for the pledge. Mike, you want to start us off?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we do the minutes, I'm going to ask the clerk to read in the notice of video conferencing.
Finally, the city of Oak Creek is authorized to hold this public meeting remotely during the COVID-19 public health emergency. This meeting being conducted via Zoom video conference with telephone conferencing capability was duly noticed per the City of Oak Creek Municipal Code and statutory notice requirements more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Members of the public have been advised of the options for participation. This meeting may also be viewed at the city's YouTube page, the link for which was contained in all four mentioned notice methods. The meeting recording will also be accessible on the city's YouTube page within $48. When unneeded, all participants must state their name and address for the record, then proceed with comments or questions. Questions and comments may also be entered into the Q&amp;A function within the Zoom webinar control panel. Staff and/or the moderator will monitor this function during the meeting and provide the information requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. That'll get us to approval of minutes of 12:01, 2020. Everybody, please take a look, see if there's any corrections, errors, omissions, comments. Satisfied motion, please. Kerkowski make a motion to approve the minutes of December 1, 2020.
Biak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Biak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Okay. Item 4 is recognition and its appreciation to Mary E. Young, a retiring police department clerk. Catherine, if you'd please read that into record.
Finally, resolution number 12207-121520, resolution of appreciation to Mary E. Young. Whereas Mary E. Young began her employment with the city of Oak Creek on May 1, 2000, is a full-time emergency services dispatcher. And whereas Mary E. Young served residents of Oak Creek in numerous positions throughout her tenure of over 10 years with the police department. These positions included emergency service dispatcher, full-time and part-time, and clerk matron, part-time and full-time. Whereas Mary E. Young will be retiring as a full-time clerk with the department. Whereas Mary E. Young served professionally as an employee while completing many duties on short notice and sacrificed family time due to short timeframe requirements for completion of her duties. Whereas Mary E. Young served in the capacity of a member of the awards committee and has assisted the department's career survival unit on numerous occasions where she served as an excellent team member for others on the department. Whereas Mary E. Young received the following awards and recognitions for her excellent work product in several incidents: two shift acknowledgements, one award for outstanding police administrative services, and one honorable service award. Whereas Mary E. Young has been a valuable employee during her years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Mary E. Young for her years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the police department. That the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Mary E. Young and her family for future years. Be it for the resolve that this resolution is spread upon the minutes of this meeting, that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Mary E. Young.
Thank you, Catherine. And with us is Chief Anderson. Chief, would you like to say a few words on Mary's behalf?
Sure. And Mary might actually be on as well, but...
Yes, Sean.
But the, I know the proclamation may have been a little bit deceiving in some parts because Mary served about 10 and a half years full-time, but the other years of service, she served as a part-time clerk and dispatcher. She stepped in numerous roles for us when we needed assistance to move her to different areas. An ultimate team player for the organization. And she's going to be missed. She was always one of the first people welcoming our new employees, just a part of the core of the department. And you can't replace it very easily, as we find with all of our retirees. So we just wish her the best into the next phase of her life.
All right, thank you, chief. Does anybody have anything to say on Mary's behalf?
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Oh, please.
Mary Young assisted with National Night Out for many, many years. And this is a really long, hard, hot day. And Mary always was in best spirits, very helpful, and always dedicated to the cause. So I will miss her dearly.
Thank you. Is Mary with us? If she'd like to speak? No? Kevin's telling me no. Just very quickly, I stopped by PD the other night and just to wish the officers and dispatchers a happy holidays, I kind of do it every year. And who greeted me at front desk was Mary, ironically, with her retiring. So as chief said, I always say our protective services are kind of the ambassadors of our city, the first ones you see, whether they're police and fire. And typically, they're seeing people at their worst, and they have to be at their best. And again, Mary had a customer in front of her. She handled a very distraught person at that particular time. And I got to watch, you know, 20 years of service there in action, and she handled herself just great. So again, best wishes to Mary. I'm sure the chief will really miss you. You sounded like a great utility player. And again, you really filled a lot of holes for us, and you will be missed. And we appreciate all your service and wish you a long and happy retirement. So with that, motion for Mary, please.
Bill move to the resolution 12207-121520, resolution of appreciation to Mary E. Young, retiring police department clerk.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Duke Biak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Item under new business, item 5 is consideration of the resolution extending our public health emergency in the city of Oak Creek in response to the COVID-19 virus. We have with us Chief Kresik. So he's coming up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Kresik, tonight representing the emergency management program for the city of Oak Creek. Tonight, we are requesting an extension, a resolution extending the current emergency public health declaration. As you know, this declaration is set to expire December 31, 2020. Our request this evening is an extension of that public health declaration effective January 1, 2021 through June 1, 2021. That declaration essentially supports the ongoing efforts of the city of Oak Creek to protect its citizens and visitors during the pandemic. You know, certainly, the intent is to address a potential surge in cases due to the holiday season. But probably most importantly, it recognizes that there's a rather large event that has already begun with vaccines and the vaccination process. So certainly, this extension provides a timeframe to address those events that are ahead of us at this time. Now certainly, the council has the authority to review circumstances and extend, shorten, or revoke the declaration as warranted.
Steve?
I don't have a problem extending it, but I do have a problem with going all the way out to June. I think three months is an appropriate time period. And then we can readdress the situation after three months instead of six. The language says in anticipation of potential surge of cases associated with the winter season and plan related to the upcoming vaccination distribution. We were warned that there was going to be a surge in cases post Thanksgiving. And we were, daily COVID cases were 7, 8, 9,000 a day prior to Thanksgiving. Since Thanksgiving, the highest rate was 4831 on December 5, 2155 December 7, 2122 yesterday, 3501 today. So we certainly didn't see the predicted surge post Thanksgiving for whatever reason or excuses people are wanting to give. So I understand you've got this potential surge. You could have something after Christmas, New Year's. But that's just a, that's just a guess. So again, I would not support a motion to go to June 1. I would support a motion to go to March 31.
Thank you. Anyone else? Greg? Who is up? My fingers going everywhere, Greg. I just had a question. Does this, does the declaration correspond to any federal funding? Would there be any effect if it weren't extended with federal funding in any way?
So, and I would defer maybe some of that answer to some of the other experts, maybe DRC, the city administrator, to add some additional thoughts on that. Now certainly, from my level of awareness, there is a funding that expires at the end of this year. And certainly, the declarations did coincide with that funding period up until this point. Now, there hasn't been a decision on what the federal funding looks like going into 2021. So certainly, we can't draw a correlation between the extension of the declaration and the hypothetical that it may or may not occur. So essentially, the answer is no, it doesn't relate to that at this time.
Ian?
Thanks, Danny. I'm thinking along the lines of Alderman Kirkowski in terms of timeframe, but I want to ask you, Mike.
Yes.
Is the emergency declaration useful for inoculation plans or anything like that? Or is this strictly to be sort of in the queue for potential aid or reimbursement?
No, I think when you look at public health vaccination on this level, certainly, there are some broad-based powers established by statute that in certain circumstances are an emergency actions by a community. I think really what it comes down to with this vaccination plan is the planning that's been done in advance. I would defer to DRC a bit to see if there's a direct correlation between the declaration and the vaccination plan. But I would say that, you know, certainly, if all goes well with the vaccination plan, it's a rather smooth-running operation. I think the broad-based power is provided by statute for that emergency declaration really helped to handle any contingencies that might occur with that.
I see DRC's on. DRC, would you like to weigh in on it?
Yeah, I don't have much to add. I think what Chief Kresik said is correct at this point. We haven't been informed that it's necessary to have the declaration in place in regards to vaccination. But of course, we are just at the beginning of the vaccination period. And so it's hard to say what will happen as we go into 2021, especially with a new administration who could make different choices. So at this time, there's no correlation that we're aware of.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chris, anything?
I was just going to mention that if you go, if there's a need to extend it beyond the March deadline, we could always have a special meeting or bring it up at the March meeting or meeting the month before at the end of February if it were needed.
That is true. Mike, anything?
Yeah, well, that's the way I read the background too with Alderman Kirkowski. I kind of agree with that. We don't need to go out to that later date. But the way this reads, the way I'm reading it, is that you could ask it to be on the agenda in March as a request, and you could still, you could go out tonight.
Correct, correct. So...
So it seems kind of an arbitrary date.
It really does. Because we either have to put it on the agenda to extend at a given date, whatever we choose, or we put it out there in June and we revoke it early. Hopefully, that would be the best scenario, that we don't need it. And with the inoculation plan, who knows how that's going to go. And if the feds do do something different by the end of the year, early in the year, a break in service or something like that may not help us as well. Ian, it's fluid. You know, just like they were guessing at the surges, we're guessing on what to do. So we thought it best to put it out there and then revoke it if need be. So it's open for discussion.
Well, Mayor Dan, Alderman Duke Biak, their district. Sort of a few times that I'm not going to agree with my colleagues on the council. And I have no problem going out until June 1 of 2021. And you used the exact word that I was going to use. This pandemic has been, you know, a very fluid situation in which to deal with. I mean, since March of this year, things changed so rapidly. Steve brought up the point. Here's what we were thinking was going to happen, and just the opposite did with the number of large, or large number of cases we were expecting after Thanksgiving didn't happen. So what's the downside to keeping that emergency declaration in effect through June 1? I mean, I'd prefer to have it in place just to deal with, you know, an ever-changing pandemic so we're ready to do things immediately, rather than having to come back with a special council meeting to extend for three months. So I guess my question, what's the downside to having this thing in effect until June 1? There's no financial ramifications at all? There's no manpower issues at all? No additional expense? Or is it just presenting this image that? And I don't know what it is, but I just think that we show, we provide an image that, you know, we're in place to fight and deal with this thing, you know, through June 1. So my two cents worth.
Alderman Duke Biak, if I could maybe on that. I believe, and to Alderman, your initial point about the surge post Thanksgiving, that could be better news, actually, you know, with a drop in cases in that timeframe. So we don't know what happens next. We're hoping for the best, completely agree in that regard. But that period of time through June 1 is really, to add on to that, is, it's an estimated timeframe to try to encompass a larger-scale event, namely the vaccine distribution. Certainly, we're not sure what it looks like for the city of Oak Creek. We don't know what the public distribution looks like, or what necessarily the timeframes are. And again, the authority of the council is to review and revoke as ordered by circumstances.
My two cents in there. You guys have already debated longer than we've debated over this date. So that's a good thing. That's what you're here to do. But just to give you a little bit of background, we talked about something longer, something shorter. We ultimately ended up at June 1. It is rather arbitrary, as Alderman Tillman pointed out. There's nothing really tied to this right now, other than, you know, acknowledgement that we're in a state of, you know, we still have an ongoing issue. In balancing out the conversation about the June 1 date, we thought the council can always come back and revoke it sooner, if that's the pleasure of the council. And on the, you know, in the same vein, you know, we were like, well, I don't think anybody would have accused the mayor of construing this declaration, you know, liberally and making decisions that everybody wasn't comfortable with or really weren't, you know, a ton of impactful measures that had to be invoked under this, even during the heart of the pandemic. So that's kind of where we ended. I would presume, you know, if it's March 1, we just wanted to look to not have to extend. We can always react to this if the new administration comes in or the Congress acts before that new administration comes in on funding. And we have to adjust to that, we can come back no matter what date you choose. So I guess in a nutshell, I don't think the staff is emotionally attached to June 1. It's pretty much a convenience thing. If there's other ideas, that's...
And the June 1 date kind of sprung out of a discussion of some larger businesses picked June 1 to repopulate their buildings downtown. So we kind of went, well, if they're going that route, we'll go that route. So, and I don't know what neighboring municipalities are doing. They're probably similar. So, so the council, yes? I just point out that we routinely did these roughly every three months. And again, I don't see a reason why we have to suddenly jump to six months. I don't want to be argumentative with the judge here, but, you know, if it's an arbitrary date, then what the hell? Let's just wait, let's go to December 31, 2021, make it the whole year, and then we can come back and cancel it. But I don't think we're, I think we're more likely to extend it than to cancel it. But I just don't like going out six months. Three months, I'm okay with. Let's wait and see how things are. I mean, we're either coming to a council meeting to extend it, or we're coming to a council meeting to cancel it. I'd rather wait three months and then see what it's like, my opinion. Okay. Anyone else got a last word before we ask for a motion? Because you guys will have to deal with the motion that's crafted.
Here.
Yes.
Let's just say we took it out to the end of March. You know, one of the other aldermen recommended or suggested we need a special meeting. That wouldn't be necessary, because you already have two meetings scheduled in March. So you automatically put it on the agenda for the second meeting in March, and then you go from there. So I support the, through the end of March. That's the way I see it.
Yeah. If you'd like the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Now, any further discussion? Okay.
Tillman will make a motion to approve resolution 12208, approving the extension of the public health emergency declaration effective January 1, 2021 through... Does March have 31?
March 31, yeah. 31.
31.
It's 31.
Yep. Through the end of March. Let's just put that.
Kirkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Biak.
No.
Great, thank you, chief.
Thank you to the council. Thank you for that discussion.
Item 6, consideration of the resolution approving the amendment to the City of Oak Creek Marketing Magazine Services Contract for 2021. Leslie, you got this one?
I do.
You got it.
Good evening. If you will recall, at the beginning of this very long year, we brought, or the council approved a two-year contract with Capril Marketing and Design for the production of our Oak Creek Current Magazine. Tonight, we're bringing a proposed amendment to that contract with a modest rate increase. And that would be the first one that we've actually had since the inception of the magazine in 2016. Over those years, our publisher has juggled postage increases, multiple ones, an increase in the paper and printing costs, and just an overall expansion of the magazine. We've, I think we started out at 36 pages, and we've gone up to 48, I think, is probably the maximum. And it's gone back in sort of, in... So to break it down, the city and the school district are the two largest stakeholders in the magazine. And we're being asked to increase our contribution $250 per issue or $1,000 annually. MATC, who is a minor stakeholder, has been asked to increase their contribution $100 per issue. And both the school district and MATC have already approved those increases. As always, the current is very well-received by our residents and the businesses who advertise in it. And we feel that this modest increase, with that, we can continue to publish the magazine without having to reduce the content that we've gotten used to putting into it or having to increase the ads. And during this very difficult year, selling ads has been tricky. So the publisher does not really want to try to go after more advertising unless it's absolutely necessary. So if you have any questions about it, please let me know.
Questions for Leslie on the current?
Good evening.
I can.
Leslie, when is this proposed to actually be effective?
It would be effective beginning in 2021. So with our first issue that comes out, I think, March 1. So right away in 2021.
And what's the rationale is what, the magazine's larger than she expected? I mean, she negotiated this contract, you know, 10 months ago. So what has changed in the process?
Just the fact that it's over time has cost, it's cost her more to produce it. And, you know, and she hasn't asked for a rate increase since we began this.
Wouldn't that have been the point to do that last January? I mean...
At that time, she didn't feel it was necessary.
She should be a football player.
Well...
She should play football.
She, you know, she wanted to hold the rates as steady as she could. I think, you know, 2020 brought a very interesting challenge. She offered a reduction in advertising rates for our, you know, for the businesses as a, you know, help to them. So, you know, she just evaluated the costs over time. And, you know, she's had to sort of absorb those and shuffle them over the years. So she felt that now would be a time to ask for that, so.
Appropriate time in the contract renewed, to prove it, so. Anyway, I digress.
All right. Chris?
Alderman Guzekowski, 6th district. I think one of the things that I would bring up is, I'm in the printing and trade, as you know. So this does seem like a fair ask here. But on the other side of it, though, if they want to do increases and they want to do it yearly or whatnot, she could be proactive on that, I think, too. So I think this is a good thing for us, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else? Mike, any thoughts? Greg? Rich? Steve?
Oh, sorry.
Please, right by me.
Sorry, I thought you waved me off.
No, deep in thought. And I mentioned this, I think, earlier this year when we were discussing the contract, that this is an excellent piece of information. It's a good way of conveying information to our community about events in the city and about what's happening in our city. Certainly with the tough year that we've had, this is not only informative, but it's enjoyable reading. So I don't have an issue. You know, I know businesses incur costs throughout a cycle or throughout a contract. And a lot of times, you know, they've got to eat those increased costs. I don't know what Barb's margins are here, you know? So I don't have a problem with the $1,000 increase. I think that's, as I've mentioned in the past, this is money well spent.
Sorry for cutting you off.
No, it's okay.
Alderman Kirkowski, I like the publication. I don't know what the return on investment is, but that's irrelevant because it's a good publication for the city. I don't have a problem with the increase. But Leslie, just let her know that, you know, we have cost overruns on projects all the time. And she shouldn't feel like she has to try and bite the bullet and then come to us with issues. If there's issues, you know, have her come to us right away. That way, we don't, you know, get hit with something. I mean, it isn't a big increase, but, you know, just tell her everything's okay, you know what I mean? All right, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
But we have a contract. Oh, if we're going to sign a contract, we hold the terms. I mean, it's...
Yeah, we have a contract, but you know, sometimes with the road projects, I mean, they have a contract.
I don't want to be beaten in the ass on this because it is small money.
$1,000 bucks.
But it's a contract. I mean, it isn't a rolling, you know, payment up to. It is what it is. I'm just not a principle, just, but I'm not going to fight over it.
Again, given the COVID, maybe the fallout of advertisers, hard to say. It's like, like Chris said, maybe printing costs, I don't know. I prefer it.
I still think it's a value. I like it, I don't mind it. It's about it.
Okay, guys. Motion, one way or the other. Duke Biak move to approve resolution number 12211-121520, approving the amendment to the City of Oak Creek Marketing Magazine Services Contract for 2021.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
No.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Biak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Item 7, concerns engineering and its consideration of a resolution accepting the dedication of public improvements and release from the development agreement for the Oakview Business Park, CSM Project in the 5th District. Mike, how are you?
Very good, Mayor, thank you. So the city entered into a development agreement with West Park as the property at 201, excuse me, 102 West Oakview Lane Parkway in Oakview Business Park was to be developed. And it has been. That's that large warehouse, warehousing logistics facility that has been open. And they, in that development, they needed to construct some public infrastructure. And I'm sharing my screen, hopefully everybody's seeing that. It is the cul-de-sac that leads to the parking lot and the truck entrance to that facility. And so basically, the public infrastructure that they constructed... And so basically, the, the public infrastructure that, that they constructed and we inspected and, and are recommending for acceptance and approval is the cul-de-sac pavement itself, the curb and gutter, the sidewalks. There was a little bit of storm sewer and some street lighting extended into the project. And it's all acceptable from engineering standpoint. And so the recommendation is that the city accept that and release West Park from this development agreement.
Questions for Mike? Anybody? Nothing? I think it's very straightforward. So seeing no questions, motion.
They'll move to approve Resolution one-two-two-zero-six dash one-two-one-five-two-zero, accepting dedication of the public improvements and release from development agreement for the Oakview Business Park C S M project.
Ask you a second.
Ball call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And it is concerning water and sewer utility and its consideration of the resolution establishing a special assessment for rates for underground utility improvements. And looks like we have Brian from the water department with us. Hi, Brian, how are you?
Good, how's everybody doing this evening?
Good.
We are here to talk about the special assessment rates. These rates have not been adjusted since two thousand and seven. And the new rates are just for sanitary and water projects. The old resolution also included street construction, but we have not used linear footage, special assessment rates in the past several years for road work. So this is just limiting it to water and sanitary and creating the, the new rates. These rates are based off industry standards designed by Cost Works, which is a design estimating booklet. So any questions on this?
Questions for Brian? Ken?
Hey, Brian, can you tell us, give us a ballpark where these were or where they are currently?
Yes.
Do you have that in front?
So, single-family rates for a sanitary, that's considering an eight-inch sanitary main, that went from ninety-four dollars to a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And for a single-family water, again, that's eight-inch water main, that went from forty-seven dollars to ninety-three dollars. So that one was a significant jump.
And that's per linear foot, right, Brian?
Correct. On, on a side note of that, the average for like the last four years of our eight-inch water main projects has been a hundred and twenty dollars. But we haven't had, I would consider, normal projects in the past few years. So those numbers, I think, are a little skewed as well.
Is this something that, it's two thousand and seven was the last time we did this? Is that something we should be revisiting, you know, more often? I, I don't know.
Definitely, I, I feel we should visit this more often. It's not something that happens all the time. We do.
Okay.
The utility does a lot more special assessment projects than what the city does. But it, it's not a yearly thing by any means.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, these are relatively uncommon. Okay, all right, then, thank you. Yeah. Answers my question. So if someone would petition the, the water utility to add water sewer service, or, you know, we decided this, the water utility decided to lay main in a neighborhood which currently is not served, that's where this kind of stuff would come into play, so. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Seeing none, motion.
They'll move to approve Resolution one-two-two-zero-five dash one-two-one-five-two-zero, establishing special assessment rates for underground utility improvements.
Is it called scale second?
Ball call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Item nine is the license committee. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Another long and exhaustive report here. Does anybody trust everybody's gotten it? And does anybody have any cares, concerns, questions about the three individuals for the operator's license? All right, seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed under December fifteenth, two thousand twenty, license committee report.
Dukniak, second.
Ball call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item ten is consideration of the motion to approve the December ninth vendor summary report. So if everybody, please take a look, and if you do have questions, direct them at the appropriate person, either on screen or in person.
Andrew, what's listed, item number five, is that Edgewater? Is that the right word? Is that Edwood? Edwaters?
Yeah, Edgewater. Edgewater is one of two of our consultants looking at the North Fluff for us.
Okay, cool.
Edgerton, I think, is more notable, but Edgewater Resources is in the mix, too.
Very cool.
Alderman, Tomlin, item number four.
What's it going to?
How's it going down? Yes, yeah, I can answer that. Can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, they, they are fairly well wrapped up out there. So they got going about eight weeks ago and probably were out there for about six weeks and, and worked very efficiently and, and did a, a nice job. So this is a, a large payment. It is, I would probably, I don't have the full amount of the contract. It was a little over four hundred thousand dollars. So I would say that we're probably paying for three quarters of it with this one payment. We have some retainage that we'll, we'll get one, one good thorough look at the site, see if there's any punchless items. And, and if everything is good, then we would probably be looking to make that final payment at the meeting in January. So, a, a, and, and just a reminder, this was the, this was the work that was the preparatory work for the all that free soil that's going to be hauled onto the site and used as the clean soil capping next summer.
At the road, Mike, basically.
Yes, that, yep, that is part of it. Correct.
Anything else on the vendor summary? Seeing none, motion.
They'll move to approve the December ninth, two thousand twenty vendor sum report in the total amount of six hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars forty-seven cents.
Is it called second?
Ball call.
Alderman, Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item eleven, it is consideration of a resolution authorizing the payments of bills, debts, and obligations. And keep in mind, we were the first meeting in January. This allows the finance department to pay all debts and cut checks as needed. So the city is not in violation, so. Questions?
Thanks for reminder. Yeah.
I thought I just cut to it. And again, this will get us through and then we'll review, we will review that vendor summary at the first meeting on the nineteenth, just to be clear. But it does allow them to not violate state law or statute. Any questions? Seeing one, motion.
They'll move to approve Resolution one-two-two-zero-nine-one-two-one-five-two-zero, authorize payment of bills, debts, and obligations.
Is it called second?
Ball call.
Alderman, Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
And item twelve is to consider a motion to convene and close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub E, to discuss the following: a proposed tax increment district number eight finance development agreement between the City of Oak Creek and S T C Oak Creek W I L L C for the property of one-on-one and one-eleven West Oakview Parkway; and B, a proposed second amendment to the development agreement between the City of Oak Creek and Stellon Chewies L L C for the property of one-on-one West Oakview Parkway, as in Gail.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail moves to convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point five, sub one, sub E, to discuss the following: A, a proposed tax increment on the district number eight finance development agreement between the City of Oak Creek and, and S T C Oak Creek L L C for the property of one-on-one and one-eleven West Oakview Parkway; and B, a proposed second amendment to development agreement between the City of Oak Creek and Stellon Chewies L L C for the property of one-eleven West Oakview Parkway.
Let's go second.
Ball call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
We will now convene and close session and resume at its conclusion. We will now consider a motion to reconvene in an open session.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail moves to convene in an open session.
Let's go second.
Ball call.
Alderman, Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And fourteen is consideration to take action, so. Alderman, Gail.
Um, are we going to move on to fifteen then?
Sorry, if required, yes. So we go on to fifteen, and that is consideration of the motion approving the tax increment district number eight financial development agreement between the city and S T C Oak Creek.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail moves to approve Resolution one-two-two-one-zero dash one-two-one-five-two-zero, approving the tax incremental district number eight finance development agreement between the City of Oak Creek and S T C Oak Creek L L C.
Is it called second?
Ball call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
And item sixteen is consideration of the resolution approving the second amendment to the development agreement between the City of Oak Creek and Stellon Chewies L L C.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail moves to approve Resolution one-two-two-one-four dash one-two-one-five-two-zero, approving the second amendment to the development agreement between the City of Oak Creek and Stellon Chewies L L C.
Go second.
Ball call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And before we adjourn, this is our last meeting of the year, gentlemen. Anybody, anybody want to say anything? Last time of the year, Chris.
Mayor. Could I have a few minutes, please? Need to share a personal story with you, please, and my council members. Just want to be able to make sure I can see everybody. So Catherine, if I can, can I just push this? Yeah, there, all right. All city leaders, I hope you can excuse my need to refer to some notes today, but I have an important news to share with you. It's my privilege and pleasure to serve the City of Oak Creek and to be a wonderful part of this incredible community that I've been born and raised in. After experiencing some difficulties, I have been diagnosed with Huntington's disease. Huntington's disease is a rare genetic neuro, neurological, you got that right, disease. Some of you may know my eldest sister Judy passed away of Huntington's. Her husband Dale Richards is a former mayor, and he is my brother-in-law and her husband. As you can imagine, the diagnosis has been life-changing for me and my family. And we are beginning to navigate through the ins and outs of the news. As colleagues, I wanted to personally share this news with you at this time. I want you to know that I am committed, absolutely one hundred percent committed to partnering with all of you and intend to serve my constituents in the sixth district through my term. I also intend on running for reelection, health permitting. I am still able to realize my strengths and contributions to our city and to this council. Know that I will be transparent in my ability to serve if it's impacted. My health, my wife, daughters, Alyssa, Carly, Lauren, along with the family are at the forefront. But the City of Oak Creek is also so very important to me. I appreciate the time to address this to you today. We ask for prayers and support. Feel free to approach me with any questions, anytime you'd like to talk further. And in the meantime, we have a lot to accomplish as we did here tonight. So let's continue with the work at hand. Thank you for letting me share this story with you today, and remember, every day is a gift. Thank you.
Chris, thank you for sharing that. Wow, that, that's, that's a lot to comprehend, and believe me, my prayers, my thoughts are with you. You're a very brave man to, to state that publicly. And again, we've had a difficult year and had a lot of bad news, but that, that's, that's terrible news in my eyes.
Mr. Mayor, the reason I was going public with it is that I plan on hosting, you know, not many people know what Huntington's disease is. So it's an awareness thing. So our, one of my plans for twenty twenty-one is to have a, a five-k walk run that at, hopefully at, like, Vista, and to bring awareness, because again, it is, I mean, each, my community resources director at work was not really sure what it was either. So it's something that people are just not aware of, so I'm sorry to interrupt, sir.
No, no, not at all. Anyway, if you need support, you need help, feel free to call me whenever you need me. I'd be glad to help you, Chris.
And I, I want everyone to know, though, that I, I still want to be part of things. I still want, I'm, I'm not giving up anything I'm doing. That's why I was reluctant to come forward, but I don't want you to start seeing things, maybe in some requests coming down the line and wondering what's going on. So that's why I wanted to really share it with you here today. And timing, I really was, it's right before Christmas, but I know, too, that as things start happening after the first year with requests, you may see, see things and wonder, huh, what's going on? So I, I'm not one to really hide things that much. I'm kind of an open book kind of guy, so I wanted to share.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. And again, my thoughts and prayers are with you and your family at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to share? Steve?
Chris, I'll, I'll echo what the mayor said, and, you know, we, we are a family, so you've got a bunch of people here that you can count on to help you.
Thank you.
Chris, if you need help anywhere along the way.
Thank you. Thank you.
So before we adjourn, you know, this is our last meeting of the year. Today is a special day for the city. The city is sixty-five years today. It was incorporated sixty-five years ago in nineteen fifty-five. So happy incorporation to the city day today, kind of special. Lighting on the square is still continuing. Please share the season with your family and friends. Take a walk through, enjoy the lights. It was all courtesy of our lead sponsor, Martin Law Office. If you get the chance, you know, drop them a note on Facebook, say you appreciate it. It was a great gesture in a very challenging year. And lastly, I'd like to thank not only the staff here, I do that quite a bit. This has been a challenging year. Nobody saw twenty twenty coming. You blink your eyes and it's March, and you blink your eyes and we're extending that thing we talked about, and here we are. It's been challenging. It's changed. From the outside, our services never changed. Our, our staff did an incredible job, but Andrew, our election staff, Catherine, did an incredible job a couple of times and challenging. Just, there was just nothing easy in twenty twenty, and I couldn't be more proud of this city. We've kept things open. We've done a good job. And as Alderman Kirkowski pointed out, it was rolling, it was fluid, we didn't know what to expect. It was supposed to be better by then, and, and it didn't. I'm just hoping twenty twenty-one leads us to bigger and better things, and the sooner the better. So I, I'm going to wish you and your families all happy holidays, great health, and again, just blessings. So I'll leave it at that. Anybody else? Go ahead, Mike.
Just one question, Andrew. Expectation on that.
The idea would be to close through the first tax collection, so that would have been, that will be January thirty-first. And I think that that's up in the air yet. We're going to revisit that. But the timeline on, on the, on the, on the high side or the outside for the library and the front desk would be February. Um, but the timeline on the, on the, on the, on the, the high side or the outside for the library and the front desk would be February one.
And a couple of people asked, so I don't know what to tell them. Okay.
All right. We're sixty-five today. Andrew, can we go on Medicare now?
I haven't looked into that like you guys probably would have, so.
So I don't know the ins and outs. Wow, maybe it's that easy. Who knows? So, if there's nothing else, uh, again, I wish you a great holiday season and I ask for adjournment. Kirkowski can make a motion to adjourn. Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.